Call to order. Regular meeting Board of Director of Monterey Peninsula Water Management District for Monday, June 21st, 2020 at 6:01.
2021, 2021.
2021, roll call please.
Yes, Director Riley.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Roberson.
Here.
Director Malik.
Here.
Director Adams.
Here.
Vice Chair Pa.
Here.
And Chair Edwards.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all directors are present.
Thank you. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions and corrections, corrections to the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Thank you. Next item is oral communication. Anyone who would like to speak on the oral communication may do so. Addressing the board on consent calendar items, information items, closed session items, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all of the items at the time they are presented to the board. Oral communications are now open.
All right, so the board welcomes your public comment during oral communications. If you would like to provide public input, please raise your hand via Zoom. And if you're calling in, please push star nine. When it is your turn, I will identify you by your name. If you're calling in, I will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. At that time, you will need to push star six to unmute yourself, and you may identify yourself or the clerk's record. If you're joining us on an electronic device and are calling in, please lower or mute your device volume to limit any feedback that may be transmitted via Zoom. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to invite Susan S., but before I do that, let me share my timer here. Directors, are you able to see the timer down?
Yes.
Susan S., when you're ready, please make your comment.
Thank you. Good evening. I just wanted to verify something from another meeting that as a 152 ordinance oversight committee person, I want to voice my support for the current continuation of the water supply charge and user fee revenue in order to fund current projects in Measure J. I'm also happy to see the budget assumes a payment of $230,000 towards interest and principal for the Mechanics Bank loan, which the committee has been advising in the past. Thank you to the agency and the board for their great job over the past difficult year and all your hard work. I look forward to possible water purchase agreement regarding PWM. And I also just want to thank you for putting on a recent laundry to landscape workshop, which my husband and I attended, and we're hoping to do that. Stephanie and Dan, and also DRO, Sustainable DRO, a shout out to them. It was a very good workshop, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised at this time, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar, and it's a big, long one. Any board members would like anything pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, Director Riley, got his hand up.
I'd like to pull item 14 for a quick question.
14. Any other board members would like anything pulled from the consent calendar? All right, thank you. Joel, could you please open it up to the public and find if anyone in the public would like anything pulled from the consent calendar?
All right, at this time, it is probably a time to raise a hand or push star nine. Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar except number 14?
I still move.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first by the vice chair, second by Director Kye. Okay, we're going to be approving 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Malik.
Yes.
Director Roberson.
Yes.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pa.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven ayes, zero noes, and carries ununanimously.
Thank you. All right, Director Riley, what you want to know on page 63, item 14?
The staff report makes reference to the funding for this project, but there was a rule change or procedural change or whatever. I'd like to know what's the substance of the change as opposed to just the financial side of it? Is there a substantive change or is it just mechanical process?
I think, Steve, yeah. Director Riley, there is, we're moving the program from the way it's previously been regulated to a general permit. We have to fill out programmatically what's called the Form 200 and enroll the program. Along with the Form 200, it's required to be accompanied by a technical report, which summarizes the project and all of the historical monitoring that's happened at the project. And a new monitoring network will be designed, but it will highly likely resemble what's been done in the past. I know that the reporting will change from annually to quarterly reporting for the project. And we'll see as we move into this process. We're completing the compliance report for the water year 2020. It's due in July. After we finish July, we'll continue to enroll in this new regulatory process. And about mid-year budget, we'll have a new framework as far as what the monitoring is, and we'll be able to make a better estimate on what we think the monitoring costs will be. But there will be some programmatic changes, but I don't, it will be only on the groundwater monitoring side and not the water rights side. So it will be just how often you go out to different wells, and how often you report, and what constituents you take at those wells.
And this has nothing to do with FLO 9 that we're going to talk about later, right?
It does not.
Just ASR. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I approve approval of item 14.
I'm second.
Hannah, we have approval by Director Riley and second by Director Adams. Let's take it out to the public for any comments.
Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised at this time, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call vote on item 14.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Roberson.
Aye.
Director Malik.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pa.
Yes.
And Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next item is the general manager's report.
Yep, and thank you. Before I get into the water supply discussion, I do want to highlight a few things relative to COVID, post-COVID-19 reopening. We are planning to reopen the building for customer service on Tuesday, July 6th, the first day after the July 4th weekend holiday. Our lobby rules will be a little rigid, preferably no more than two customers at a time. If we have a crunch, we'll try to take either cell phone numbers or give them the butcher shop number. Here's your number line, and hopefully they could wait in their car. We hope to have full integration of the office by mid-August, but we'll be monitoring the state and federal rules to see. I know a number of the private companies don't plan to get back fully until September. The dress code will be a little loose at first as people try to either reacquire their old bodies or acquire new clothes. Don't be surprised if we're, you know, you won't see any pajamas, but, you know, we'll give, we'll cut some slack as people try to find a new wardrobe that's working for them. And we're still sensitive to the differences in our staff, those who have kids, and not everything is fully reopened. And of course, we'll be following the school scheduling activities. So that's something that we're just following at this point. We are looking at offering a hybrid model or flexible work schedule. However, the flex days would only be Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And we'll see how that proceeds. And then we're still trying to, you know, what you have out there is Cal OSHA, CDC, and guidance from the county itself. They're getting more consistent with each other. But there's still a few things that we're assessing, but we think we'll have it all in place by reopening on July 6th. So if you have any questions, I probably can't answer them. That's about all we have. The managers have been meeting. I've tasked Stephanie Locke with doing a lot of the research, and she has, but we haven't come back fully as a group to talk about all these things. So we look forward to seeing people back in. I know that we've become very productive without having the customer service desk open, but there are those people who miss it. So we shall see how it goes. I think, just, I'll confess, I went in the office this morning, and it was kind of depressing because people go in, they go to their offices, but they don't turn on all the lights in the building. And so it still feels a little bit uninviting, so we'll work on that one. Now moving to the general manager's report. Joel, are you going to put that up on the screen for me? Thank you. And we'll go to the first slide. So as you know, this is the first year where we're now monitoring the Carmel River and Seaside Basin compliance, but we've got pure water Monterey providing supply. And so what's interesting here is you can see in the actual versus target over on the right-hand side, that actual is in fact coming in under target by the 300 acre feet, but this year is way below last year by about 2,400 acre feet. And that reflects the fact that we're now relying more heavily on pure water Monterey water, approximately 2,000 acre feet to date. What we will see in July and August is the district will shift from selling pure water to Cal AM, instead putting it into the operating reserve to bring those balances up. And then the company will rely more on the river and the seaside basin. So some of these numbers will balance out a little bit. Next slide, please. Ooh, nice effect. This one reflects what I was just speaking about. You can see the pure water Monterey. We're doing a little better than target because we reduced our expectations when we had some of the injection well issues. So a negative difference is actually a good, it's a positive. But as you can see, Sand City D cell still struggles a little bit, and we do have a discussion item a little bit later on that topic. Next slide, please. So this is again our supply versus demand kind of proxy. There are four months left in the water year, so you can't take it to the bank. But when you look at total for this year relative to last year's total, we're still 12 acre feet ahead, so we're basically right on top of last year. Remember, last year was pretty affected by COVID-19, but because the water year starts on October 1st, this year is also pretty affected by COVID-19. And so, you know, we're kind of counting on the reopening at the tail end of the water year, offsetting the openness at the front end of last water year. But we'll just have to see what happens. You may recall, two months ago, I walked you through the data where you could see that the shift in commercial, the commercial drop in demand was more than offset or equally offset by the increase in residential demand as people hunkered down at their homes. So it's hard to predict what, how the year is going to end. Next slide, please. It should come as no surprise to you that we booked basically zero rain in May. So the total for the year is just under 11 inches, actually 10.85. That's 52% of the long-term average. And assuming no additional rain, that would put us directly in the critically dry statistical category for rainfall. Next slide. This is the rainfall totals at the San Clemente Dam rain gauge, where the red is the cumulative and the blue is the individual events. And again, it just shows that April, May, and June so far have been, you know, I think there's a little dot in April, so pretty much negligible. I can tell you that being a participant in the reclamation project that serves the seven Pebble Beach golf courses and RLS school, there's also concerns on that end whether there's going to be sufficient recycled water supply in a heavy irrigation season. We were assisted by a lot of the marine layer issues on irrigation, and that may help dampen both recycled water needs and commercial and residential irrigation needs. Next slide. Finally, unimpaired flow, slightly different than rain, is you can still see some flow in May, and you'll likely see some flow in June and July. However, we're already at 24% of the long-term averages, which would place us, even if nothing changed, in the dry category. So actually, a little better than critically dry. Interestingly, if we got the historical averages for June, July, August, and September, it wouldn't be enough to push us out of the dry category. So we're going to end up in a dry year by nomenclature.
Did you ever anything else before?
And right now, the river is flowing, but it's low and intermittent from a river mile five, 5.4, which is roughly the Cypress well area, down to the middle of Palo Corona Park. What that means is we've already started fish rescues. And let me check my data here. The team has done 1,899, so just under 1,900 main stem rescues, and 74 rescues from Garza's Creek. All of them have gone into Sleepy Hollow Fish Breeding Facility, except eight, what are known as Celts, physically adapted males ready to go to the ocean, and they were released to the ocean at Stewart's Cove, just outside the State Park beach. And that concludes the compliance report. And because of the length of the agenda, I tried to leave any other reports off of my topic.
Okay, any questions to the general manager on his reports?
I have one.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
What are the definitions of dry year and critically dry year? How are those defined?
That's a great question, and if you have time for a little exercise, if you think about taking all the historical data that we have, which our rainfall data is, it's a different number of years than the stream flow data. But think of both of them as, you know, 80 to 100 years worth of data. So you take your data and you put it out there and you break it into parts, into pieces worth 12 and 1/2% per section. So then, starting with the driest of years, the driest 12 and 1/2% are called critically dry. The next 12 and 1/2% are called dry. The next 12 and 1/2% are called below normal. Then we take the next two bands of 12 and 1/2%, so 25% of the historical record in the middle, that's your normal. Then the next 12 and 1/2% is above normal. The next one is wet, and the one after that is very wet. So that's how it lays out.
Thank you.
Any other question? Go ahead, Director Rau.
I have a question. It's on a different subject. Is it appropriate for a quick report on the LAFCO prognosis? On where the schedule is?
Yeah, absolutely. So where we're at, we have a workshop on Monday, the 28th with LAFCO via Zoom. Those details will be available. The packet goes out on Wednesday. The district filed a memorandum kind of addressing primarily California Americans Attorney, the Minat Law Firm's lengthy letter that they submitted, I don't know, a month and a half ago. There will be no action. Well, we expect no action. This was a last opportunity for the commissioners to decide whether they wanted to see any third-party studies, additional data, you know, more digging into our application. What the LAFCO staff would like to do is close that out, and then across the summer, finish their analysis and make a recommendation for the August board meeting of LAFCO. Unfortunately, no good deed is ever left unpunished. So our memorandum was followed by a 54-page memorandum by the Minat Law Firm on, I think I received it Thursday morning, and it's still under review, where they're reasserting some of their earlier claims. They're not really making any new claims. Our whole approach has been, you know, we're a responsible, you know, big boy agency, and if our board wants to make a decision that, hey, the results of the feasibility study are promising enough, we want to move to the next stage of activating our latent powers, then that shouldn't be taken lightly. But, you know, even if we determine it to be in the public interest, the courts also have to determine it to be in the public interest. So that's the approach that we're taking. We're hoping that LAFCO understands that they don't have to litigate this issue during their deliberations. But we, you know, we certainly understand their desire to know more. And it's an interesting, you know, probably once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for LAFCO to see these kind of things. So we can't be surprised that certain questions to date have been, well, you know, what else can we see? What's going to happen? But back in a nutshell, meeting on the 28th workshop, followed hopefully by a decision on their August meeting. And associated with that are two items remaining incomplete. One is a resolution of what's called no tax transfer, and the county board of supervisors has that on their agenda tomorrow, which we hope is completely non-controversial. All these, whenever you do an annexation, you have to have an agreement with the county based on policies set probably three decades ago at this point. We adopted our resolution a couple months ago. They're going to adopt their resolution tomorrow. And that will leave the only incomplete item, greater detail on the property tax impacts on local taxing jurisdictions. And you approved funding last month for a consultant. We interviewed three. We've chosen one. They seem to be terrific. I don't think they'll have results ready for the 28th LAFCO meeting, but they're moving with pretty good speed, and they've unearthed a few differences in what LAFCO's seen and what the county's seen in terms of overlap of parcels. So we think we've got the database figured pretty well out, and we'll have the property tax impacts shortly. So everything's moving, but I think the summer will slow things down at LAFCO, and we won't really see anything until August.
And isn't it true that the real determinative decisions are going to be made in court rather than by LAFCO? And is that part of the argument?
It is. And one of our points is in LAFCO's legislation or in the code at this point, you need to give consideration to certain things. We kind of went through all those different things. But one of them is the will of voters and residents in the area. And so, you know, it's our hope that LAFCO lets the courts do their thing, lets this board do its thing, and mediates the issue in the middle, but gives consideration to kind of the enormity of the voter push behind this. So, yeah, the courts, it's a two-step process. The bench trial decides whether it's in the public interest, which is really what the thrust of the Minat Law Firm's whole approach has been is, oh, well, if the data is no good, or you haven't updated the data, or you don't really know what the full rate impacts are going to be, then how can you possibly determine that this is in the public interest? And our point has been, again, that if our board says we think it probably is, and we want to activate our latent powers, the courts are going to end up on the other side affirming or not. And so that's exactly where we stand. The courts will be the final arbiter of this.
Thank you.
Will it be a single judge?
Yeah, and Mr. Laredo can address this better, but the bench trial's going to be a single judge. The valuation's going to be a jury.
And if it appeals, it will go to a three attorney panel, three judge panel.
On appeal?
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of talked over you there. Sorry about that.
Okay, any other questions on general manager's report? Okay, we'll move to general counsel report.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and members of the public. There was no closed session to report upon, but I did have a request by the chair to give a very brief update on two matters of pending litigation. The district did file a complaint against California American Water that is lodged with the Public Utilities Commission. Cal AM had an obligation to answer that complaint. Cal AM did so on Friday, June 18th. Cal AM both lodged its answer and then filed a motion in the case as well. The district now has a responsibility to respond to the motion. The district's response is due on July 6th. In that matter, we are dealing with special counsel Tom McBride, who's taking the lead there. But we will be, it is a motion to dismiss, and we will be responding to that. The next item that's scheduled before the Public Utilities Commission in this matter is that Judge Zeta Klein will be convening a pre-hearing conference that is set for July 8th. That is the time, the first time that we're going to be before the ALJ. ALJ will confirm the status of the matter, identify the parties that will be heard, will provide any clarification to discovery that would be allowed, whether or not there will be any alternative dispute resolution. The Public Utilities Commission, as a practice, does recommend alternative dispute resolution before a neutral ALJ. I don't know if that's going to be the approach here. And then finally, the Judge Klein will likely forth a schedule, a hearing schedule, briefing schedule, and provide the general parameters as to how this matter will proceed. Again, that will be on July 8th. That is going to be a Zoom conference, and the members of the public will have an opportunity to listen or watch, not to participate. Participation is for the parties only, but will make certain that the information is available. The other matter is Cal AM's lawsuit against the Water Management District. That's their petition for writ of mandate by which they challenged the district's EIR that was approved in connection with the potential acquisition of the Monterey Water System and the district's boundary adjustment application to LAFCO. That petition was filed on November 17th. Uh, that petition was filed on November twenty-fifth last year. Uh, that matter is fully briefed and we do have a hearing date on the merits. Uh, that's gonna be before Judge, uh, Wills. Uh, Thomas Wills in Department Fifteen, and the hearing date is August thirtieth at nine AM. Uh, originally, there had been an earlier date that had been tentatively set, but, uh, due to a variety of factors, including the judge's own schedule, uh, that was set to August thirtieth. And that will be the hearing on the merits. The administrative record is fully lodged, all the briefs and counter-briefs have been filed. And it's just an opportunity for argument, responding to the judge's questions, and hopefully we'll be getting a determination from the judge, uh, either at that time or shortly thereafter. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Laredo. Uh, good report. Now it's time for a director's report, including AB one, two, three, four, reports on trips, conferences, and attendance at meetings. Any board member that have anything they'd like to bring up? I see no hands, well, you know, I always got something to bring up, so here we go. Um, Janu- June, July, June seventeenth, Monterey One Recycle Water Committee at a meeting. At that meeting, some things were discussed and brought out. I'm gonna bring them out and the general manager or general counsel can, can either answer them or not answer them if, if it's inappropriate. One, that the water purchase agreement is about ninety-five percent done. Uh, they could clarify that. Uh, that was brought out, and also that Cal-Am is gonna lo- loan Monterey One Water some mon- some money so they can get started on the expansion program. I, I think it's two mi- two hundred million, two million dollars or whatever. Please clarify that for us, general manager or gen- general counsel. Uh, I'm bringing this out because it was brought out publicly. And if they got anything to add on to that, I appreciate they, if they will, if they can. But this was brought up and Monterey One Water Recycle Committee, and I want to thank that committee for moving things forward on the, uh, pure water expansion program. Um,
Mr. Chairman, I'm certain that Mr. Stolt is gonna wanna weigh in on this, I just wanna remind him that this is not on the agenda. So if you kind of consider this as an extension of your report as to activities that your office has been undertaking, but this is not an opportunity for full discussion by the board.
Thank you, I thought he was gonna bring those items out in his report, but he didn't, so I brought them out. So if you can clarify a little bit, and then we'll move on.
Absolutely. Uh, so to the first point about water purchase agreement negotiations, the five percent may be the hardest five percent, uh, it relates primarily to performance guarantees. Uh, specifically water delivery guarantees and amounts. And also, uh, damages, uh, so we did respond, uh, our, our team of Mr. Laredo, myself, and their team of, uh, attorney, uh, Rob Wellington and Paul Schudo, my counterpart, did meet, did discuss, and also reviewed a transmittal letter and we transmitted, uh, over the weekend our current revised version of the water purchase agreement. And so that just remains outstanding, um, the second item, you are correct, that there was, I wouldn't characterize it as a loan per se. Uh, but more likely a contribution in aid of construction. But the number was two million. And that is primarily in response to, uh, Monterey One Water's own concerns about using further reserves when they had a particularly, uh, uh, public rate increase here in the last several weeks, and so, uh, looking for outside financing is, uh, wise and should protect their ratepayers, um, I believe that once we get a water purchase agreement, uh, that's satisfactory to everyone. It will still need to be adopted by the Public Utilities Commission, so it's not a slam dunk, but once there is agreement in principle, then I will come to you as our board to request participation in funding some of these pre-construction costs. Um, but in the meantime, uh, that is, you, you correctly, uh, presented what happened at their recycled water committee meeting.
Thank you, so we'll move along and, um, thank you, Mr. Laredo and, and general manager for all the work y'all are doing on that, and we'll be looking for more for it in a closed session one day.
And that's what, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, uh, remind us that one of the factors, uh, behind the complaint that this district did file against Cal-Am was for its failure to act on the water purchase agreement. So this does implicate the, uh, issues that are at play before the Public Utilities Commission in the complaint. So, uh, we need to be mindful of that and we need to be reporting to you as a board as to how any discussions that we have with the, uh, with the other two parties do affect the, uh, the status of the complaint. We're mindful of that, we are certainly, uh, I think it was an optimistic statement that this ninety-five percent of the way there, uh, the, I haven't seen anything that, uh, would suggest to me that there is an agreement in the offing.
All right, we will, we'll remain cautious, as the general manager say, we'll remain cautious, so thank you. Our next item is public hearings. All right, general manager, I turn it over to you.
The first one, item twenty-nine, is our quarterly water supply, uh, strategy and budget, uh, so again, you do this four times a year. And I will turn this over to, uh, Mr. Lear.
Thank you, Dave, uh, Chair Edwards and members of the board. I'm gonna have a presentation for you. Thank you, Joel. So this is, uh, item twenty-nine, the public hearing for, uh, to consider to adopt of the July to September twenty-twenty-one quarterly water budget, this is the last quarter of water year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and, uh, we will be moving into water year twenty-twenty-two in October, so next slide, please. Uh, for this quarter, the fourth quarter of water year twenty-twenty-one, um, we have to consider, um, the state, uh, board orders of that are all listed here, they, they have different, uh, rules associated with how water is produced and how much water is produced from different components, um, state board orders are mainly focused on the Carmel River, alluvial aquifer, and the adjudication decision, of course, is focused on the seaside groundwater basin, and this, uh, budget that we put together uh, does reflect the one-thousand-foot reduction off the river that was imposed this, uh, water year. Uh, we have different, um, water resources projects that we also consider, one of them is, uh, what to do with the ASR. Um, this year, the ASR, it being a dry, critically dry year, um, we injected sixty-six acre feet of, um, water this year. Um, that brings us with the balance that was, um, banked from last year to one thousand two hundred and thirty-six acre feet. The group decided to leave this in storage and not recover it in this last, um, quarter of the water year and have it available in water year twenty-twenty. Um, if necessary, if the, uh, dry conditions were to continue, we would have some more water available, uh, for supply for the community. The table thirteen, water rights allow Cal-Am to divert water at certain flows at certain times of the years from their Carmel Valley Well Field, and they also, the flows did not reach, um, and sustain to harvest a lot of water out of that, so, uh, table thirteen will not be a factor in this, um, quarter of the water year, and then probably the largest change that Dave hit on earlier is the pure water Monterey options. Um, there is, uh, uh, wh- what is called the operational reserve, which if there were an interruption in the supply of water to the injection wellfields, the operational reserves will build up water, uh, in the aquifer and therefore, um, the Cal-Am wellfields will, in seaside, will be able to recover water uninterrupted. Uh, there's, uh, requirement to, to bring it up and true it up at the end of the water year, and then over the next water year, um, and calendar year, add some more. Uh, so we're taking this opportunity in the last quarter of this water year to have, bring the operational yield to the, to this full capacity, so we can move into water year twenty-twenty-two. Um, as we know that the water in the river is going to step down to thirty-three seventy-six most likely, and, um, we would like to have the full operational reserve to have the most, uh, redundancy in the water system. So next slide, please. So, um, based on those decisions, the water budget we put together, it assumes full utilization of all the coastal, uh, s- sub-area native groundwater um, by the end of water year twenty-twenty-one. We, it assumes that we will store all ASR water, um, for use in water year twenty-twenty-two if necessary. It resue- it assumes that recovery of pure water Monterey will be less than the volume injected to allow the buildup of the operational reserve and inner water year twenty-twenty-two with the full reserve. And this, uh, budget was developed on June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one by the Quarterly Water Budget Group, which is, uh, the district, Cal-Am, uh, California Department of Fish and Wildlife and NOAA Marine Fisheries Services, services in correlation with the State Water Resources Control Board. Next slide, please. This is a look at, we always kind of look at the precipitation, as Dave mentioned earlier, if we receive the type of precipitation, um, forecast and then no, not to, in the type of, uh, dry years, critically dry years that we're in, um, we would expect to have little to no rain, and the predictive models say that there's an equal chance of us receiving no rain, so, um, we should expect no rain over the next three months. Next slide, please. And this is the reminder that this quarterly water budget is done four times a year, but it is, does come out of a component of Rule one sixty, um, which sets the annual demand for the, the pe- pieces of the water portfolio that are pro- produced out of the natural system, being the seaside native water and the Carmel Valley alluvial water, and these are our targets for those and, uh, for those systems of where we need to be at end of month for those those systems, and the quarterly water budget folds these components of the water supply portfolio into the proposed budget. Next slide, please. So these are the, this is the budget and, um, it is, uh, across the top, you'll have the July, August, and September, the months, and then we list by source, um, the Carmel Valley alluvial aquifer, so we're, we're, um, proposing to produce about five hundred acre feet per month out of the lower units in accordance with the state board order rules. Um, so that will be the component that comes out of the Carmel Valley alluvial aquifer over the fourth quarter of this water year. And out of the seaside basin, we're going to produce around four hundred acre feet, uh, per month, which will be a mixture of the coastal native groundwater, um, some supply from San City. As you can see, no ASR recovery, and then, uh, pure water Monterey at about two hundred and thirty per month, um, with, uh, an excess going in to stay in storage. And then we go down to use, sometimes some of the use of the water produced out of these different systems go to diversion to storage, so that would be shown here, if we were storing with ASR or, or if, if we were diverting directly to use as a table thirteen right, um, but none of those happened in this, uh, water year beca- in this quarter of the water year because of the permitting. So, um, as you show, all water produced, uh, from these different components during this quarterly water budget will go to meet customer demand. So if there's, and this is the one that has all the information on it, so I usually pause and see if there's any questions about the the decisions a group made.
Uh, no, but, uh, if you go back to your last chart, I, I got that number, the eight, seven, eight, four, eighty-four? If you can go back to that, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, that number, is that the correct number, even though we lost a thousand acre feet?
It is, because it's the, um, it's the seven thousand three hundred and ten, um, additive to the fourteen fourteen hundred and seventy-four from the, um, native, so it's, it's the sources of water that are available to, to feed the main system.
So the total?
Yes.
Okay, even though we lost a thousand, it's still up there.
It wa- it used to be nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-four.
Thank you, thank you, now, okay, thank you.
So I, I have a question as well on that same slide. Thanks, Joel, so I'm just kind of wondering, uh, for June, the monthly target was seven ninety-one. Can you tell us how close we've come to that target?
Uh, so this will be a, yes, we can, and this will be a combined, um, of the, the w- water that's available from the natural system, um, to meet customer demand. Um, and so those are the numbers that are reported by the general manager when he says to date, out of the seaside basin, we're on target, um, and that's for the native groundwater out of the seaside basin. Uh, and to date, we're on target by this amount with the, um, Carmel Valley alluvial aquifer, and so we want to keep those two components below the, these end of, end of month, um, and then cumulative year totals. Um, and I, I don't remember the exact amount we were beneath it, but around three hundred, I think, or something? That we were beneath, um, the total for the net, the water coming from the natural system. And then the rest of it, of course, as Dave had mentioned, of customer demand is being met, um, and shifted to pure water Monterey. So, um, just simply st- stated, eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-four acre feet from the natural system is not enough to meet total system demand for a whole year, you have to have water that comes out of ASR recovery or pure water Monterey.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, Joel, if we could advance to pass the second table, and thanks for flipping back and forth. So one more, please.
Recommendation?
Yes, please. So the staff and, um, quarterly water budget recommendation would be to adopt the proposed water budget um, for the main system for the fourth quarter of the water year, um, being July to September twenty-twenty-one, and, um, have the district, uh, file a notice of exemption at the county.
Okay, are there any other board questions at this time? No other board questions? Okay, Joel, let's open up to the public for public comment on this item. Three minutes.
All right, I will do, uh, so at this time, if you would like to make public comment on this matter, uh, please raise your hand. If you're dialing in or calling in, uh, please, uh, press star nine. At this time, I would like to invite Tom Rowley, uh, before I do that, let me share my screen. Uh, directors, are you, I need more of this, uh, directors, are you able to see the timer there?
Uh, yes.
All right. When you're ready, uh, Tom Rowley, uh, please present your comment.
Yes, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, board directors, and excellent, uh, report as usual. Um, Mary Adams supervisor will remember that, um, my old friend, Jack Jensen, used to say, you know, three, uh, years are gonna be normal rainfall, uh, eighteen to twenty inches every ten years, and seven years are going to be dry years, as he called them, which is below the eighteen to twenty inches. And you know, now we're down around ten, we're about half of the normal, uh, rainfall, average rainfall. This is without getting into too much nitty-gritty. Unfortunately, uh, Jack passed away, uh, about two and a half years ago, and, uh, we don't have this sage advice, former CEO, Fleet Numerical. Uh, I dearly miss him. Um, finally, it just seems to me that in the current, uh, no rain, everything's dry, projecting let- less water use in September may be an over-optimistic forecast, you may be right on, and I know you use the data and you've been through the data and, uh, checked it carefully, but it, it does appear that the September monthly, uh, it appears to be a little bit on the low side in view of the, uh, what we're, the, the weather cycle that we're in. So, um, again, uh, Tom Rowley representing the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association, uh, that's my, that's my query and my suggestion, that I think you're a little bit low on the possible September. on the possible September projection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see any hands raised, so go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. John, did you answer Mr. Rowley on that last question like? If we come up short, what do we do?
If we come up short, yes, here I can, if we come up short, we can choose to, to not build the operational reserve as, at the rate we were planning on, or we can choose to recover ASR water. So, there is, there is a pivot that we can do. But we're basing, our estimates are basing it off of kind of the, the climate, but also the, the history of water use. And as Dave stated earlier, not knowing what reopening or COVID and the history of that, it's, it's, we, we, we did hold it to what we had seen last water year a little bit and, and increased it a tiny bit because it was drier, but I can appreciate that comment.
All right, thank you. Any other board questions on this item? If none, I'll take a motion and a second.
I'd move approval of the quarterly water report, quarterly supply budget.
All right, move by Director Rowley, do we have a second out there?
A second.
Okay, second by Director Amy, okay. Anything on the second? Words of wisdom? If not, roll call.
Director Malik? Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, action items, General Manager.
Yes, thank you. I'll be taking item thirty. Very short, but tragic story. Stephanie's college age son had a water pipe break in his ceiling over the weekend and completely flooded out everything he owns. And so,
Oh, man.
Yeah, so Stephanie got on a plane, I guess, midday today to Arizona to help deal with those kinds of things. So, the good news is she didn't get her PowerPoint to us in time, so there is no PowerPoint. This is the same item that you heard several months ago and then reheard as a first reading one month ago. Subsequent to the first reading, the sequel work was done and there were no public comments. And so, where, where we are at is there would, there would have been no change to the PowerPoint that you would see. And we would be ending with the recommendation to a not, to adopt the negative declaration, which is attached as exhibit thirty B. That's the new part, that's from the environmental exercise, and then adopt ordinance number 187.
If I may, Mr. Stolt, there is one typographical error on page 135, and it's under section four, paragraph number two. And the instead there in italicized language says it's nu- nu- number three. That should be number four. The remainder of the language is precisely the way it should be. That is the only change modifying the paragraph number from three to number four on page 135, section four.
Great, so that's what you were talking about right before the meeting when I came?
It was Jo- it was Joel's sharp eye that, that found that, and that is the correction.
Okay. We will make sure that happens before it gets adopted or gets printed, rather. Excellent.
Okay.
So, with that change.
All right, is there any other board questions on this item? All right, Joel, let's take it to the public.
All right, so if you would like to provide public input, please raise your hand via Zoom. And if you're calling in, please push star nine. Let me go ahead and took a look at the attendee site. And we have a few individuals, Director Edwards, that would like to make public comment. So, let me go ahead and share my screen. And directors, are you able to see the timer?
Yep.
Yeah.
At this time, I would like to invite Paul Dale. Paul, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Chair District Directors, good evening. I am Captain Paul Dale, commanding officer of the Naval Support Activity Monterey. I encourage you to improve ordinance 187 and to adopt the associated negative declaration. Ordinance 187 allows us to look forward by acknowledging our past. The DOD planning construction process can take decades. Ordinance 187 recognizes this process, provides us with the flexibility we need to continue to support our mission. And we are appreciative of all the work that's been done. In what the Monterey Bay Defense Alliance recently estimated is $1.4 billion annual economic impact from military installations, support of our industry is critical to the region. The ordinance's creation of a Department of Defense jurisdiction could additionally support the military mission by streamlining water use credit efforts and providing for future mission growth. The Navy values the importance of a sustainable, reliable and affordable water source, and we look forward to continuing to work with the district determining a future water allocation. Thank you again for your time and attention to this important matter.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so at this time, I would like to invite Erica Marks. Erica, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening, my name is Erica Marks with the U.S. Army Garrison for the City of Monterey. And on behalf of our Garrison Commander Paul Chung, I'd like to extend our gratitude to the district staff, especially Ms. Locke, for all of the hard work they poured into this ordinance and their willingness to collaborate with us and our Navy partners and in allowing us to provide input during the development of this ordinance. I'd also like to thank the board for your consideration of adopting this ordinance and for your recognition that this ordinance would ensure that each of the military installation on the Monterey Peninsula can continue to provide the best possible training facilities for all of our military service members and the staff that work to support their missions. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
And Director Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and turn this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, board member, mo- motion, second?
I'm going to adopt the negative declaration and adopt ordinance number 187.
All right, we have a motion by Director Adams and second by?
I'll second it.
Oh, well, Vice Chair had a hand up there, Mayor. He slipped her hand up there without saying anything, so.
I'm used to coming in third. At meetings, but not elections, thank you.
Goodness for that.
All right, we have a motion by Director Adams and second by the Vice Chair. Anyone who would like to speak on the second?
If I may, I would just quickly like to say, this is something the City of Monterey has been working on with our installations, and it's really very important to the language capital of the world. The City of Monterey is registered as the language capital of the world, and we have great partnerships with all of our installations, our educational military installations. So, this is really an excellent move. And I know our retired city manager and retired Colonel Fred Muir has been instrumental in making this happen. So, I'm, I'm really happy to see it in front of the board.
Thank you, Mayor. And just quick comments, I agree with what Mayor Clyde said about, you know, the land's capital and moving this ordinance on. I also want to thank two board members, Molly Evans and Janie out of Pacific Grove. Jenny Byrne out of Pacific Grove. They brought this up to us and said we should do that, and they were leaving the board. But just let them know, General Manager, you can email them, that has been done. So, thank you all. Any other comments? If none, call the, uh, roll call.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. General Manager, next item.
The next item, three, one, is an action item to authorize entering into a contract with LAFCOF and GOVLA, Democrat, demographic research. This is a, every ten years when the census comes out, we are obligated as a district to look at our boundaries by divisions for balance. Balance consistent with the Constitution, of course, both state and federal voting rights, federal and California elections code, dealing a lot with social justice issues, numbers, and so forth. They did the work for the district after the 2010 census. And in fact, they did the work for the district back when, in the nineties, when the district went from district-wide elections to voter division elections. I think our general counsel can speak to the history more than I can because I only, I got here right after they did their last work, but I've read their analysis and actually used some of the tables in our LAFCO application. And I think they do a very, very good job. They've given us a quote based on three potential outcomes. Think of it as no changes needed, minor adjustments needed, or major revisions needed. And so, the maximum of those three is 45,000. However, I've added in a $7,000 buffer, assuming we might have to get maps drawn and GIS work done if there are significant changes. Our hope is that we don't get to that point and that we're actually still in kind of option one for now. But certainly, there may be some things that push us to option two because we were kind of close on a couple voter divisions in 2010. So, we'll just see where the, you know, where the data takes us. I think if you paged through their exhibit, their proposal, you can see they've got great experience and are eminently well qualified and educated. And I think that their fee quote is, is, is very competitive.
Any board questions? If no board questions, General Manager, is this coming out of this year budget since we haven't approved next year budget?
No, it'll come, it's been written into next year's budget. I think at 45,000, I don't know, Suresh, if you need to make a $7,000 adjustment or not. But between the budget workshop and today, we've tried to go back and look at these kind of contracts and make sure we've covered them. So, they should be in next year's budget.
Okay, thank you. And another question, this age, this company is not doing any other work in the county, are they?
Oh, oh, they have and they will. I think they are engaged in some county work. They do a lot of school district work at other times of the, the year, but they have worked in the county before.
Okay, Mr. Laredo, would that be a problem? Because if, you know?
No, sir, there are no conflicts of interest there. The data are exclusively to the district and the divisions, and there's no overlap.
Okay, thank you. If no other questions, go ahead, Director Adams.
Just a comment, I'm really glad that we've opted for the higher amount because I, I do think that things are going to be shifting a little bit this time. There just have been, you know, people moving and new areas opening up for, for residents. So, I think this is going to be a, a good thing. I, I expect that it will be a time of change. So, thank you for the good thought of putting in for the, the higher amount. I think that's good.
All right, Director Rowley, I see your hand up.
Yeah, there's going to have to be some changes. I, I think removing some of the four-door population from District One is going to change District One, maybe District Two, and maybe pushing in at least District Three. It seems to me there's a substantial number of, of, you know, a population number that's going to change some of the formulas. I, I just, in my mind, that's where I think there are.
No, you've actually advanced to the next step. You're a little bit ahead of everybody's game. So, if, if as a result of the LAFCO process and the desire to move forward, we were to cede territory that is currently under contract or now under annexation by Marina Coast Water District, then that would have absolutely the effect you're talking about. So, when we talked to the firm, the two, the two principals of the firm, we told them that is a follow-on project that we will ask them to bid separately. Right now, this piece is just restricted to as if nothing changed. And so, that overlap with the four-door area will remain intact through this work. And then we will see what, if anything, LAFCO wants us to do about the overlap or what this board wants to do because there is a little bit of representation without services in Division One. There's also some property tax coming from Division One. So, that, that is something that absolutely needs to be looked at. If you decide to do it yourselves, even if LAFCO doesn't direct us to do it, when Marina Coast Water District was going through their annexation process and they didn't annex everything that they're entitled to serve, the rest is still contractual. But when they went through that process, LAFCO did notify us that they did not see a conflict and a need to adjust our boundaries. When we got into our application to LAFCO, the issue did come up. So, you, you know, it's out there, and I think we should at least do the work to figure out what the impact would be on us. And so, that we're going to put together a, a scope of work for that specific project and then ask for another bid from these people, from this firm.
Director Anderson, you had your hand up.
Never mind, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's open up to the public.
All right, so at this time, if you would like to make public comment for item number thirty-one, please raise your hand via Zoom. And if you're calling in, please push star nine. Director Edwards, I do see here that we have one participant here that would like to make public comment. And are you able to see the timer here?
Yes.
I see it.
All right, so when you're ready, Tom, please present your comment.
Good evening again, Tom Rowley, resident of Monterey in the Fisherman's Flats area, which is part of your current Division Two. I was privileged to be appointed by the Monterey City Council, both after the 1990 census and after the 2000 census, to serve on the committee. The original committee that changed the boundaries to district elections, we made two suggestions, basically the current divisions that you have still today, which were, I believe, Mr. Laredo can correct me on this, were readopted after the, at the 2000 census. And I believe the 2010 census, you did not have a committee formed, although there were changes in population that were still ongoing at that time. We've had a lot of, lot of new housing built in Marina that's in Marina Coast Water District area. But also, there's been other changes taking place where there are a lot more absentee owners in, say, Carmel Pebble Beach and also in Pacific Grove over the last 20 years. So, I've been around long enough and have participated in the past, have seen that it looks like there is going to need to be, and I would agree with Mr. Stolt's comments, some major changes. One of the two recommendations our committee made back after the 1990 census was in the boundaries. And by the way, the original divisions that were drawn up by these cartographers were really kind of nonsensical. They did not take into account the divisions for cities, the lay of the land, Carmel Hill, the ridge, the separation, Salinas Valley from the Salinas Highway corridor. I mean, there were a lot, lot of simple things that these demographers just did not understand about the, about the population. So, they're not foolproof, they're good, but they're not foolproof. And I caution Mary Adams Supervisor's level, you need a really good committee to look at the county. So, I would suggest that. So I would suggest that a similar type citizens committee with input from the various communities. I was one of, I believe, two representatives from the city of Monterey, and we came up with a recommendation, which I believe the first part was adopted on the boundaries. However, our suggestion that the ad hoc appointments of the supervisor and the, and the mayor's rep should be representatives, but non-voting representatives, similar to the way Tamsi has set up. However, we realize you're not set up like that today, but that certainly is worth considering. It's like a double vote. So thank you very much for letting me make some comments.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. Any board questions? I have a couple of comments. Go ahead, Director Ralph.
Yeah, I'm still coming out of my gopher hole here for question after question. Dave, it seems to me that we have other questions that need to be resolved going forward. I mean, it's partly the question of timing about the four-door population. Also, are we going to, are you going to recommend or not? Or where does it, when the discussion comes up about forming a committee, a citizens committee of sorts? I know timing is very short and tight and probably a worse schedule than we could possibly ever have on one of these important dynamics. But that's one question is kind of the timing and, and what, what are you, what are you thinking in that direction? The other is, if there is a redistricting advisory committee of sorts, will there be a cost involved in that? And is that kind of incorporated into the budget?
That's right. Yeah, to the advisory committee idea, we don't believe it's important unless we're heading to that kind of level three, where there's significant boundary changes. I should let you know that recent law very much encourages public input to any redrawing of your boundaries. The League of Women Voters has already sent us formal communication expressing an interest in participating. But our belief is there, we'd have to look at the data for a level two adjustment, which again is, don't just leave the boundaries alone, you need to make minor adjustments to move some population around. But a level three adjustment, you know, there are significant issues about keeping communities together, keeping jurisdictional boundaries consistent with voter divisions, ethnicity, you know, a whole variety of issues that need to be weighed if you redraw the line. So we have to wait for their data. And then that, that will determine whether a citizens panel or committee is going to be useful in trying to preserve those kinds of things. That then speaks to the schedule. Based on the, how the census data came in, they're not really going to see the data they need until September. And we won't see kind of final or semi-final work product until the beginning of next calendar year. And we're targeting, you know, being in a position to adopt in March. But if significant boundary changes are kind of indicated, then it could be a little bit longer than that. So all talk of getting a citizens panel together should wait until we see what the first cut of the data is telling us.
And, and as, as a follow-up, it seems to me that the maps have to be completed in time for the Elections Department to finalize category for the June primary.
That, that is correct, which is why we're kind of saying March is the, the drop dead.
Okay.
And I appreciate that you've got the hardest district as a director. And, you know, the, the second part of your earlier question, which is, you know, what, what about the four-door community and so forth, will significantly push the problem probably either through your division and into Division Three, or to the east and affecting both Division Five and Four, and possibly also Division Two. So it, it'll be interesting to see what our data tells us. And Mr. Riley's not incorrect that, you know, a lot of the Carmel Pacific Grove home sales are probably not taking their census here on the peninsula. And so there, there will be some new revelations, I suspect. But population as a whole has not changed that much. So it may be that, that we don't see a whole lot of significant change, like the county would, like Speaker spoke to earlier, where there's been significant change outside, but, you know, it's outside our jurisdiction. So, you know, you've got East Garrison and, you know, other things and what's going on in Greenfield. You know, I would imagine that there's going to be some interesting changes at certain other county levels and both supervisory and special district.
Well, just one other thing, I, I think it's good to have this consultant do the work because if they're going to do the school districts, MP, what is it, Unified School District, will have their districts and some of those neighborhoods of interest or what are they called, communities of interest, may be overlapping in terms of how, where you understand whatever the school district does, whether, what our district will do. And, and I, I, I think that's a good consulting choice, consultant choice.
Great. Quickly, Director Riley mentioned an election in June, but we won't have one until November for the district in 2022. So we have to be ready by then. Not in June? I don't, I don't, county got an election in June.
That's a great, that's a great question or a great point because I think you might be right with the registrar, there would be no need to have final maps adopted if we're not going to participate in the election. So we'll look, we'll look into that.
Very good point.
Okay, and, and I would like, if possible, you know, you've got this community, they want to be involved, so let's leave that door open and find out what we're going to get. So if there are no other questions, do we have a motion? Go ahead, Director Clyde.
Thank you, Chair. With the timing of the elections, Chair Alvin and Director George both bring up good points. If there are changes and the current board members are no longer in the district from which they were elected initially, does that mean everybody is up for election in November of 22? Or?
Good question.
Redistricting could cause a vacancy. It just depends on how it is drawn.
Okay, that's a great answer. Thank you.
Good. I, I hope we don't do it like Marina. Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Also move.
Okay, motion by Director Robert, Director Clyde. I'll give the second by, by, by chair. Okay, roll call.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Riley.
Yes.
Director Adams.
Hi.
Director Malik.
Yes.
Director Roberson.
Yes, and you're doing us roundly to keep us on our toes.
Vice Chair Pa. Vice Chair Pa.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes, make sure you keep me last. Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item, GM.
Yeah, item 32, another action item. Inexplicably, the recommendation was left off the staff note, and that's my fault. The proposed letter, which is attached as the only exhibit, was reviewed by the Water Demand Committee. One edit was made in vocabulary and one edit was made in format. And a list of recipients was added who were on the recipient list for the original December 23rd, 2020, letter that we sent to the state. There's kind of two interactions with the state right now that we've not received a response on. We're addressing this one first tonight, which is our formal request was never addressed to have the executive director waive the 1,000 acre foot penalty on the community. It's important to recognize that it would potentially have an impact because our starting point for next water year would be 1,000 acre feet higher, whether we missed another milestone this September or not. And because we're nearing the end of the period for which the CDO imposes these effective diversion limits, which is December 31st of this calendar year, it would have potentially had a positive impact on water availability for at least the first three months of the next water year or the last three months of this coming, this current calendar year. Not huge, but impactful nevertheless. So it's not just a hand-waving exercise. Had they addressed it in a timely fashion, it could have had some impact. So this is simply requesting closure, if you will. And as I mentioned, the Water Demand Committee has recommended that the board approve sending it to the, or that the board hear it and make a decision on its own, whether to send. The State Water Board is aware of its existence because they checked out the packet for the Water Demand Committee and they saw it coming, which is good to know, so it won't come as a surprise. But it, it's pretty much self-explanatory, if you've read the exhibit, it would be a group vote to move it forward.
Any questions from the board?
I, I have.
Vice Chair.
Yes, and, and this is, reading the letter, a question is about the obligation to consult. So if I am reading this correctly, are we saying that both the, both the Water Board and Cal-Am have an obligation to confer with the district? So the Cal-Am pursuant to the, the order, the Water Board's order, and the board pursuant to, because of due process requirements, is that what we're saying here?
Yes, and there's a difference of opinion. And Dave Laredo, I don't know if you're about to lean in with a response, so you, you want to start?
Cal-Am has the obligation to consult, but the state board has an obligation to not enforce a unilateral request for, because doing so does interfere with the district and other parties' rights of due process. So the state board independently has an obligation to see that the consultation did occur.
And, and the difference of opinion, I can tell you that their attorney that's working on this says they're not sure we have due process rights. We didn't file this as an application under the Water Code, so there may not be an obligation to hear or act on it. But our view is that because we were elevated to applicant status on the 2016 revision to the CDO, there's actually two pieces to it. One is a joint report in June of every year that's looking forward to say, how do we as co-applicants feel that we are going to perform relative to the next milestone that happens in September? That joint report was filed last year without any coordination with the other applicants, which did concern the State Water Board. It was done the same way again this year, where the other co-applicants received the report the same day the state board received the report, even though it's a joint report. But because we also earned the name applicant in 2016, we felt that the ability of the executive director to waive the penalties, that it was their duty to hear any applicant's request and not simply one applicant's request. And so, as I've said, there's a little bit of difference of opinion. Our, our, our other application related to housing was filed under Water Code, and it is much more clear on the need for a response. But, you know, I think it's good policy to respond to folks who send you letters and ask for things. And I think they recognize it too, but they've just been incredibly busy and, you know, it's easier to just push it out.
Go ahead, Director Ralph.
Well, for, for the rest of the board too and the public, it seems to me that we have a pretty strong argument and case to be heard because Cal-Am's initial, the application, whatever their documentation was with the State Water Board blamed the district for being at fault because of missing the milestone. There is every right in the world that we should have in order to, you know, make a counterargument. And, and anyway, that's, I don't want people to forget that.
Good point.
Any other questions? Okay, I just got some, some comments from, from Water Demand. Mayor Clyde mentioned that he'd like two other members of, of the, of the county to be added to this. He mentioned our district center, our district center, John Lear, and our district assembly, Mark Stone, to be added to the CC list. Now, I threw out the governor, but I don't think y'all, y'all, I think Assemblyman Stone and, and John Lear could, could help us out by going to the governor with this. You know, I, I, I don't feel obligated right now to, to send this up there. Anyone in the public want to do it, they can. It's a public letter now. So that's my comments on that. Any other board comments? All right, Joel, let's open up to the public, please.
Yes, so if you would like to provide public input on this matter, please raise your hand via Zoom or if you're calling in, please push star nine. So at this time, I do have one person with their hand raised. And directors, please be patient with me, I did have a technical issue. So let me go ahead and share my screen and let me know if you see my timer here.
See a clock?
Yep.
So, Tom, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Good evening again, Tom Riley. Something the Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association has followed very carefully is this 1,000 acre feet penalty that the State Water Resources Control Board slapped on us as of one October last year, effective date for this water year. Cal-Am Water caved in without calling in for assistance from the Water Management District, who, as Director Riley correctly pointed out, has charged that the water management is responsible for the delays. Certainly, the Water Management District should have been asked for input. Cal-Am Water did not ask for input. Why? I don't know. Leave that up to people of higher authority. There's no doubt that the letter that was sent, I believe was from Pebble Beach Corporation in January of this year, reiterated some of the same arguments about lack of input from people that should have been talked to before they implemented the 1,000 acre foot penalty. Granted, it is all part of the CDO, which has been out in front of us for a long time, but to come out and lay this on the Monterey Peninsula, all the businesses, all the residents, is way beyond common sense. Now granted, the State Water Resources Control Board is busy, but I don't think they're any less busier than the Water Management District here or the local cities battling tremendous budget shortfalls because of the pandemic. What they did in one October was outrageous. And facing, again, another 1,000 acre feet loss at the end of this water year, September 30th, is also outrageous. So I strongly, in our organization, would support yours putting in comments to say, you know, what's up with the State Water Resources Control Board? They have fallen in their obligation in what they should respond to your requests, and this is just uncalled for. So thank you for following up on this, and we appreciate it.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
And Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody else with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, board, any other comments? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Thanks, it's just a question, and I think I, I have this right. So if by some unusual chance, we do not have the EDL reduction imposed, can we take that 1,000 feet essentially and bank it so that as we head into the next year, we'll be, you know, we'll have a nice little cushion, since we've already said that we're kind of planning on not having it? Is that something that works as far as the way we keep all of our statistics? And if the answer is yes, is that what we would do with the operational, is that how we would build the operational reserve? And if the answer is yes, is that what we would do with the operational, is that how we would build the operational reserve?
So great questions and a little bit different. The operational reserve on pure water Monterey is is wet water. But we actually produce it and put it in the ground. The effective diversion limit is to the extent we didn't take the full amount from the Carmel River becomes paper water. So when the limit was eighty three ten, which was prior to October one, every year that Cal Am pulled less than eighty three ten out from the river, created a credit in the bank from which they could take seven hundred and fifty acre feet out in a subsequent year if needed. So you get, you know, seven hundred and fifty acre feet of relief in a year. That's called carryover credit. The carryover credit regime expires December thirty first anyway. But it does mean that even October first, missing another milestone, there's still credit in that bank. We've encouraged Cal Am to interpret the language of the CDO to assume that you can still include that credit in the next water year. And the question is, do you have to assume that you're taking it all in the first three months of the water year because after that, you're on a calendar year basis or what? But but the concept has existed, but it will sunset January one.
So essentially the answer is no.
Yeah, it's basically no after December thirty first.
We get three months, we get three months of of the benefit.
Yeah. Which means, and and the benefit is significant. It's on the order of almost three thousand acre feet of savings since two thousand and sixteen. So obviously, if if we had needed it this year, which it turns out on a practical level, we didn't. That means this huge significant balance for three remaining months under the effective diversion limit, for which we would only get the benefit of seven hundred and fifty. So all of the rest just, yeah, goes goes away.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
No, no question. If you're asking for a motion, I move approval of the letter to the State Water Board.
Do we have a second? Second by Director Anderson. And on a second, Director, I mean, General Counsel, listen to the Taxpayer Association and I'm glad they 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 timed down this. Any other kind of way we can juice this up for them? Or is this satisfying enough that's going to be enough? Because those taxpayers said something and they backing us, I want to give them something.
I I believe the letter is carefully tailored to dovetail into the prior correspondence. Taxpayers Association is more than free to send their amicus letter supporting this or enunciating their own position. I do not recommend a change.
All right, thank you. And just on my quick comments, I want to thank everybody for the support on this letter. General Counsel, you did a good job on it. General Manager, both of you, but I want to thank you both and I think it's appropriate that we send this one last letter up there to them with our legal counsel on it.
And before you, before you call the question, can we clarify that the recommendation includes the addition of our legislative delegation as recipients of on the CC list?
Yes, the the amendment to the letter that way.
Mayor Clyde, you still want them on there, right?
Yes.
All right, those two, two names, please add them to it. On a second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
You're muted, Amy.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Aye.
Director Malik?
Yep.
Director Roberson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Motion passed. Thank you. All right, General Manager, I would adjourn, but we got the budget.
Yeah, the 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 single most important thing we had on our list of items today, so. With this, Suresh does have a presentation to provide. I would hope that he can highlight any changes from the budget workshop that you all participated in. But other than that, it's very similar to what you heard a month ago. But Suresh, go ahead and are you doing screen saving or is Joel running?
I could do that.
Joel's doing the screen share.
Okay, great.
Thank you, General Manager Stoll. Chair, members of the board, so this is the budget presentation in the interest of time and the lengthy agenda that we had. I will keep this short. Next slide, Joel. So this is the budget overview of the timeline, how we got to tonight's meeting. We did discuss the budget in detail at the budget workshop on May twenty seventh, which leads us to tonight where the board is asked to adopt the budget. And also there was a appropriation limit item in the consent calendar that got approved tonight. So those two actions are slated for tonight's meeting. Go ahead, Joel. We followed the the previously board adopted strategy. This is just a highlight from a last presentation to develop the annual balance budget and to preserve the existing service and enable the district to carry its mission and vision. And also to maintain that general operating reserve between five and fifty percent. And the budget that I'm presenting tonight will have the general operating reserve at forty seven percent. Go ahead, Joel. This budget is using, going to be using the reserves to balance the budget, to maintain the current programs and services. Since two thousand and four, we have made staff has made every effort to do, develop balanced budgets. Last couple of years, we were able to do it, but then the last few years, three or four years since we started doing the PWM project, we have been using reserves and it was primarily because of that project. And as I mentioned, the total reserve balance for the budget that's presented tonight stands at forty seven percent of the operating budget. Go ahead, Joel. So for twenty one, twenty two, again, we were mindful of the current economic conditions for the district's primary funding sources. We have four major primary funding sources now. Property tax, water supply charge, user fee. And of course, we have the PWM water sales now. So those are the four revenue sources. The original requests were made by the divisions and then team management did review those, made those adjustments. The format of the budget is again kept the same as presented in previous years. And we did evaluate the COVID nineteen impact. We've had a whole year of COVID experience now. So we've looked at our revenue sources and I'm happy to report that neither neither our user fee nor our water supply charge got impacted by the by the COVID nineteen. So but but we did closely monitor that and we will continue to monitor it. We do monitor our user fee on a monthly basis and we do review our water supply charge and our property tax revenue twice a year. And then PWM water sales, basically that's just a pass through coming in every month. So we do review all those routinely. If there are going to be any significant changes or impact to the revenue side, we will definitely bring it to your attention and that will be done before even the midyear budget if 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 it necessitates. Go ahead, Joel. The proposed budget twenty one, twenty two that's presented tonight, the twenty nine point six million dollars. This is about seventy thousand dollars more than what was presented at the last budget workshop. And that seventy thousand dollars is primarily due to all of the consulting contract changes. The forty five thousand dollar budget line item for the Lep Lepkov. Hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, Lep Lepkov. That is included in the budget. We are including about twenty thousand dollars for our website maintenance program that was suggested or recommended by the TMD Designs. We have some minor increases in the in the state legislative contracts, so that's included in here as well. So that that all made for that seventy thousand dollar change and that was that was primarily just those three changes. The twenty twenty one budget is about four percent higher than the the twenty one, twenty two budget is about four percent higher than the previous budget twenty twenty one. And as I had mentioned, we have full year of user fee revenues included in this proposed budget. And that is again based on estimated Cal Am collection of order revenues. And as I mentioned, we will definitely monitor that. We monitor that every month. And during the midyear budget process, if there are going to be any adjustments, we will definitely address that at that point. Next, Joel. This budget also includes a full year of water supply charge, a full year of property tax revenue, and then this will also have a full year of PWM water sales revenue. And as I had mentioned again, we will continue to monitor all of these activities because we are definitely sensitive to the revenue side. If there are going to be any significant impacts, changes, we will bring it to your attention. Next, please. We continue to outsource our HR services, our IT services and our GIS functions. And all of those create in approximate annual savings of about a quarter million dollars. So we continue to do that and realize the savings from those outsourced functions. Next, please. With this budget, we are setting aside the general reserve five hundred thousand dollars. This is actually coming from the Pebble Beach Reclamation Project. If you remember about a year and a half ago, we funded the, we financed funding the the reservoir tank out there at the golf course. And so they are paying that back to us, reimbursing us back now. So the five hundred thousand comes in from that. We will put that on the general general reserve. We are setting aside our pension OPEB reserve hundred thousand piece. So that's two hundred thousand. We are again setting aside Mechanics Bank Reserve five hundred thousand dollars. That will bring the reserve bank, I mean, the Mechanics Bank Reserve to a million dollars. And again, after we close the fiscal year June thirtieth, come July one, we will be making a payment to Mechanics Bank and we will be letting the board know as to how much payment we have made. The capital reserve, we are setting aside three hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. And that includes the renewal and replacement for district facilities, so buying of trucks, computers. Even we've started setting aside money for the sleepy hollow facility, the ASR facility, anything that will break. Depending on how much we have accrued for those facilities, we will be using that to to process any any changes to those facilities. Next, Joel. So this is in summary, expenditure summary, twenty nine point six million dollars. And as you can see, about twenty eight percent of that is project expenses. Nine point six or thirty three percent is the pure water Monterey water purchase. And this is the one we buy the water and sell it to Cal Am repairs. And then reimbursement projects, about twelve percent. And personnel cost is salary and benefits that stands at about fourteen percent of the total budget. And then service and supplies at about six percent. And then we've got fixed asset reserves contingency. So some of those other smaller items in there. Next, please. On the flip side, on the revenue side, you'll see about twelve percent of our revenues comes from water supply charge. About eight percent or two point two million comes from property tax. And then thirty three percent, the nine point eight million dollars is from the PWM water sales. And then on the dark blue upper left, user fee is about seventeen percent. And then we have some other categories like carry forward, fund balance, reimbursements and capacity fee and permit fees, some smaller numbers there. So this is what makes up the twenty nine point six billion dollars. Next, please. So looking at the sources and uses of the total entire budget, total expenditures were about twenty eight million dollars, setting aside of those reserves that I had mentioned, one point five. So that brings it to twenty nine point six. On the revenue side, if you look at district revenues, which includes the property tax, user fee, water supply charge, PWM water sales, permit fees, capacity fees, all of those are considered district revenue. So they make up twenty one point one million dollars. The reimbursements are Cal Am reimbursement projects, grant projects, Cal Am rebates, all of those make up about four point one. And then the carry forward and reserves, carry forward are basically projects that were budgeted last fiscal year, approved and budgeted, but did not get to be completed. So those numbers are carried forward. And so we put them in the carry forward line. And then also use of reserves, as I had mentioned at the start, is that we are using some reserves to balance the budget. So that makes about four point two million dollars. So that adds up the total sources to twenty nine point six million dollars exactly to match the total use of the budget. Next, please. And then just looking at our reserves itself, where we stand, where we where we are estimated to finish at June thirtieth, twenty one, in about a week. We estimated to be about eighteen million dollars and then our proposed fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, next fiscal year, we are slated to be at about fourteen point eight. And the major change, major shift is going to be that operating reserve fifteen million dollars to eleven million dollars, because what happens, as I had mentioned, when projects are budgeted but don't get completed, they get put into the operating reserve and then they get taken out again as the projects are completed. So that's where the major shift is going to be. The other ones, minor changes are like the capital reserve, you'll see that what we are setting aside another three hundred thousand, that brings it to eight hundred thousand for that line. There was no change in drought. The debt reserve, no change. And then pension OPEB, we have been putting aside hundred thousand towards each for the last three years. And so we are proposing to do that again for next year. That will make it four years in a row. So that'll be eight hundred thousand. And then Mechanics Bank, five hundred thousand for twenty twenty one. And then we are asking another five hundred thousand for twenty one, twenty two, that will take to about a million dollars. So that's where it concludes the year at fourteen point eight million dollars in the reserves. And when we take that operating reserve, that line item, the eleven point four, that is about forty seven percent of our operating budget. So, you know, doing pretty good in the reserve side.
Yeah, let's let's stay on this slide just for a second. Sorry, Joel. I'm just, so people understand, if we actually make a payment on the Mechanics Bank loan, then as of six thirty twenty two, we won't have the full million in reserve. And so the total fourteen will go down by whatever that payment is. And I think that the policy the board adopted was to actually make the payment, not just accrue the 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 amounts, but we're not sure what that amount of payment should be. So we left it in reserve for this purpose of presentation. The second consideration on reserves is any new measure J costs that haven't already been approved. And there are some carryovers on unexpended approved authorizations, which will probably take a number of the consultants through September, October of this year. But if the board decides to carry through with a hearing of public necessity and an actual condemnation proceeding, then we're going to have to ramp up again with new items, not the least of which would be attorney's fees and likely a rate study. And those have not been budgeted because we can't predict what the board's action is going to be based on the data you'll have in your hands at the time you're ready to look at this, following the LAFCO process. So just keep in mind that would have to come from reserves as well.
Right. And just to add on there, Dave, is if there are any actions taken between now and let's say January or February, then that will definitely make it into the midyear budget. Next slide, please. So this just shows that same number from the previous slide in a pie chart. As you can see, seventy seven percent of the total reserve is in the general operating reserve. And then we have the different categories there, ranging from anywhere from one to seven percent in total. Next slide, please. So just wanted to again remind the board on the obligations and commitments for the district, future obligations and commitments. We do have a small number there for water allocation process. And then as David had mentioned, the rubber bank debt, which we will start paying down. The pure water, pure water Monterey reserve, about seven hundred thousand pension obligation, about five point five million and then OPEB obligation about four point one. So total obligation stands about thirteen point seven. And this is kind of like a moving target. It keeps changing from year to year. Next, please. So the recommendation is that the board receive the proposed fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget. And then for the board to adopt resolution number twenty one, twenty twenty one dash oh five, the resolution of the Board of Directors adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any more questions at this time? Any more questions?
Any more questions? Okay, if none, let's take it out to the public, then we'll bring it back to the board.
Directors, are you able to see the timer here?
Yes, I can.
Then we do have somebody who would like to make public comment. Sarah, if you can, could you allow Tom Rowley to make public comment at this time? Tom, when you're ready, please present your comment. Tom, if you could, press star six. I should allow you to unmute and make public comment.
I can't do anything on my end, John, sorry.
Tom's gonna let me try to.
You want me to promote him to a panelist? Is that how you do it?
Yeah, let me do that. Tom.
There you go.
When you're ready, Tom, please present your comment.
Perhaps he left his hand up from the last item that he spoke on.
All right, so we'll move on.
Hello, are you there?
There we go.
Oh, hi, Tom Rowley again. I would be delinquent if I did not, as a representative from NPTA, make a pitch that it's way overdue to eliminate the double whammy on the ratepayers, which includes residents and businesses. You have a very substantial reserve. Just recently, the sewer board just laid it on five years to make up all of its mistakes in the past. Just went full board out on the residents and businesses. You guys collecting a double whammy of the user fee, 17% and the water supply charge 12%. You're really hitting the pocketbooks. It's inflationary, it's affecting every citizen on the Monterey Peninsula and every business. And I think you are way overdue to be consider getting rid of being heroes and getting rid of the water supply charge. And I know you've got a million years, a million reasons, all substantiated by Mr. Stolt, Mr. Laredo, why you need to have that money. And it's clear it's all going, most of it into reserves. So I think that this is something that whether the Ordnance 152 Committee takes a look at or whoever takes a look at it, but you guys as directors need to know the citizens are just getting killed with fees and charges. Now, you can say it's inflation, but it's much more than inflation. And this is hitting local people in the pocketbooks big time. Talk to your neighbors, you'll hear it from them. We hear it all the time at the Taxpayers Association. So thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I would like to invite John Tilly. John, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, board members. John Tilly, co-chair of the Coalition of Peninsula Businesses, also, I believe, a current member of the Ordnance 152 Subcommittee for the Water District. And I just want to address in particular the million dollar reserve that's being established on top of the 500 already in place for the Mechanics Bank loan and encourage the district to use that 500 plus another 500 extra's budget to reduce that debt by a million dollars. There are no prepayment penalties on that debt, there's no reason not to. $3 million is due in June of 2023. So it seemed highly appropriate to use the, the reserves that have been established for this purpose through the water supply charge for the purpose of reducing that note. I'm seeing that there is $50,000 in the budget for Calum D cell project and another $150,000 for the feasibility study. General Manager Stolt addressed the potential for budget items that would draw upon the revenues that are not yet accounted for in this budget, should you pursue measure J. And I would think it'd be imprudent to put measure J ahead of retiring the debt that was incurred by this district for the water supply project many years ago. That just seems like a prudent way to go about doing your business. It may be appropriate for some presentations to be developed, looking forward over a number of years, two, three years. A separate budget for measure J, so that these are not unknown items, so that the account can be put in place to anticipate needs of this type and not have to draw upon reserves for debt retirement to satisfy the needs of the district. I would strongly encourage that to happen. And it seems from a business point of view that it would be quite simple to, to put together. And I think that really there's a cumulative number of 19 million dollars at the end run here. Should this attempt to buy Calum fail, that should be addressed. You have a lot on your plate. Thanks for all the hard work you do. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Go ahead, direct around.
Well, I, I just want to compliment Suresh for putting in more of the subtotal, teletotals in the budget that I'm seeing. I've been kind of looking for the forward for them and I'm glad to see them. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, maybe it's a little bit in the same line that maybe Tom Rowley or John Tilly have commented. But I wonder if sometime in the future, and I'm not asking for anything right now, but in, in the future budget presentation, could there be kind of a historical picture of where the district has been going with revenues and expenditures? So it's more than just one year to the next year, it's more like a five-year picture, eight or 10 or something or other. I know it's pretty dramatic recently, but there are so many changes. But I, I think it would be important picture to kind of have us kind of understand.
And Director Riley, let me just point to that, we do show that five-year historical trend. I actually showed it at the workshop, but I yanked it out of this presentation, just in the interest of time, but maybe I can just put those charts back in here.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yes, and if we, to follow up on Director Riley's point, if we do look, have a chance to have a longer look over a longer timeframe at the budget, to have that sense, I'd be interested to see the breakout of the grants that the district has received for projects over time. And I'll just add one more thing to that, and it's about reserves. I am, I am very appreciative that, that you, that the staff is paying close attention to reserves, operating reserves, capital reserves, it's extremely important. And it's very, very important that, that we make sure we have adequate reserves for the situation that we are in and to do what we're, what we need to do, we have to have those reserves. So I'm, it's very important, we should all be paying close attention, and I thank you, the staff, for doing that.
On, on that note, I think it would be instructive to briefly give you a bit of history. So the water supply charge, and I don't mean now, I'm not going to drag this out, but the water supply charge was established in 2012. And Suresh and I did do an analysis of expenditures and revenues and uses of reserves for the prior 10 years. And it was eye-opening, it was, it was simply shocking. And I think if you were to take the situation, then that's quite a bit of the reason why this board and recent previous boards have built up reserves. Because it was, it was, you know, let's just face it, it was on the verge of breaking up the district into just a permitting organization and doing away with water supply work. And it was a very bleak picture because attention was not paid to reserves. And that's really what Monterey One Water recently went through as well is once the system becomes 25 or 30 years old, you need to invest in capital. And if you haven't built it up, you don't have anything to go take it from. So there is a level at which our revenues and our reserves will be more than we should have in a given year. But I can't say that I see that yet on the horizon, now that we've committed to another deep well and potential expansion of pure water Monterey, so it's but I appreciate your attention to that issue because it's, it's night and day where we are today versus 10 years ago.
Hey, any other board questions? Uh, General Manager, when can y'all tell us when y'all going to pay some money on the Mechanics Bank loan? Are we going to go through mid-year or we're going to know before then?
I look to Suresh on that one.
Yeah, it'll, it'll definitely be in July because we, or maybe August, we'd like to close the fiscal year. And then as soon as we close the fiscal year, then we know that how much money we've set aside in reserves and that's actually what's being drawn upon. So after the close of the fiscal year, we can definitely bring it to your attention.
Okay.
It'll most likely be July or August timeframe.
Okay, it's going to be an agenda item? You want to put it on agenda, so?
We'll have to because it'll be a, it'll be a large amount and we don't have authority, authority to pay that.
Okay, so if we then, if we help with this well that another agency wants us to help with, that will come out of reserves, right? It's not budgeted for now, is it?
That's the Fort Ord.
Yeah, Fort Ord well.
Yeah, so that's not in the budget, correct?
Right.
Okay, so that's going to be coming out of reserves. Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Director Adams.
Sorry, I was just clearing my throat.
Okay, no other questions? Do I have a motion, Director Anderson?
Is there a, a number on item 34?
No, and that's part of the reason it's just not ripe for right now.
That's next.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move over to the budget. Resolution.
Approval by Director Riley, a second out there, Director Malik, anyone?
I seconded.
You've been mighty quiet. Director Malik had that second. Any other comments? One quick comment for me, good job, gentlemen, CFO, GM, by giving us a budget. Thank you. We'll be looking forward for other things. But thank you. Good job. Roll call, please.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Director Adams?
Yes.
Director Roberson?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. They have a budget. Now we're going into discussion items, we've got two of them. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, hopefully these go quickly. Item 34 is to consider funding for a replacement or rebuilt monitoring well for the shallow. That's what the S stands for in Fort Ord 09 shallow. I can tell you to date, the reason we are, our recommendation, which this is not an action item, but just general direction, is that this comes through the Water Supply Planning Committee, is we need to get to kind of the the, the whole story as to what's needed for our monitoring network versus what's needed for the Water Master's monitoring network. And additionally, what's needed for the Marina Coast Water District's monitoring network for Sigma. We've contended that we don't really have a use for this shallow well going forward. The Water Master has stated he thinks otherwise, or they think otherwise. So we want to have that discussion, we want to get a firm budget. And then we need discussion that we have not had yet with the two other potential participants as for cost sharing. So we just don't have a proposal for you. And there's a little too much hair on this topic. That being said, the Water Master has asked for an update on how we're doing on well destruction. And then what's the timeline for starting? So I think they're a little ambitious on the replacement side. We will be able to report to the Water Master on the destruction side. But it's just simply not ripe for us to make any recommendations. So we'd like to bring that through the committee process and before it gets back to you.
Hey, Director Riley, go ahead.
GM, I'm a little concerned about how you divide up the costs on something like this. I think we need to be kind of alert to the preservation of the seaside groundwater basin. But that doesn't mean that we have responsibility for that, we just need to be on the alert. I'm wondering if there's a way that we could limit our, at least for negotiating purposes, limit our participation to say 20% or 15% or something way less than one-third. Because the burden on need rests with the other two jurisdictions. And I would like us to be a, a kind of a, the minor player here and not an equal player. That's my suggestion.
Any other questions? Okay, Doug, Director Adams.
Yeah, I guess I why did we construct this well originally?
John, do you want to weigh in? Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, Director Adams, this, this well was drilled as an effort in the mid 90s by the district to explore into Fort Ord. There had not been access into Fort Ord to drill wells. And so there were a number of Fort Ord wells that were drilled in the mid 90s to understand the groundwater movement and the stratigraphy in that area. The district had this well as, as a monitoring well, monitored it and had no, had, had a, had a monitoring program. But then this monitor well was adopted when the Seaside Water Master was formed in 2008 and, and was adopted into their monitoring program in 2009. So it's a district's well, but it's not our monitoring program.
So do you think, like, is this monitoring well close to our ASR or the Pure Water Monterey facilities? I'm afraid I don't know exactly where FO
It, it's It's, it's being used to monitor for seawater intrusion by the, by the Water Master. And it's also been listed in the GSA for Marina Coast. So, and as the, as the Water Master, it is the GSA compliant entity. There's Sigma requirements to produce data from this area of the seaside basin, which is why they would like it replaced. However, the district has no regulatory requirement to monitor this well. It's just, we, we had it and we're willing to share the well with them.
So if we were to become the operator of the water system in the, in the seaside basin, do you think we would suddenly find it important to monitor this area with that change in role?
I think that it's pretty well described, as George said, that two dist, two entities are legally required to monitor for seawater intrusion. And that would, you know, we could watch them, but it's not, it's not something. It was part of our charge before these entities came along. But it's not a, it's not a regulatory requirement of ours. It, it's, it's interesting. But if I came in to you and said I want to drill a well because I think it's interesting, I mean, that would be a different concept, that would be a different conversation.
It would be, it would definitely be a different conversation. So there, at this point, there's, you know, we're not thinking that there would be a replacement for this monitoring well.
I think that's the, there's a lot of kind of background and I can, I can bring those answers to those questions.
But it does sound like that, you know, we need to just have a little bit more information because I'm sure that we all share the thought that if we're monitoring for seaside, for seawater intrusion, we need to make sure that we're doing a long-term look, even at the risk of, you know, of our, of our projects is somewhat low at this time.
It, it has, I would say that it, it has weight as far as it's starting to develop a long-term chemical history for seawater intrusion. But for pro, for water supply and project operation. a long-term chemical history um for seawater intrusion, um, but for pro, for water supply and project operations, it's not something we need.
Okay, well, I would never suggest that we drill a well or take one out or put one in just because it's interesting, but that was a fun thing to think about anyway. Thank you for your answers, Jonathan.
Yeah, and I think it's important, our board also understands that of the three parties, ourselves and Marina Coast and the Water Master, one of those parties is not very well equipped to expend capital expenditures, you know, so they have to spread it among their members, which means the biggest member is California-American, and so we also haven't even looked into uh how, if if we said who should pay, we haven't figured out how the who should pays can pay, if you kind of catch my convoluted drift.
So, so we can't repair the well, we have to destroy the well, and that cost is gonna be from us, how much that cost gonna be?
I think that cost will be um probably more than ten thousand and less than fifteen.
Okay, and then if we share cost in putting in another well?
Pro- probably thirty to forty would be a third.
Yes, yeah, it's a hundred thousand minimum, call it, um, all in, so that's what you'd be splitting up among parties.
Did you say one hundred forty?
No, a hundred, a hundred and twenty.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's shallow, but there's probably not that much, um, you know, it's not like a a thousand-foot-deep well that, you know, your your cost per foot just carries the the budget.
All right, so can we set up a schedule to destroy the well? Or 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 get our part done, and then we can talk about doing that, I know they're not gonna help us pay for destroying the well, are they?
That was not an offer we received, no.
Okay. Well, you ask them just to make sure, and then let's get to it, let's get that out of the way.
I have a, the 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 County Health Department has asked, I've with it being such an important data point to the Sigma compliance points, we wanted to be as above-board with the liability of the district, so when we learned it was compromised, we went to the Health Department, put a destruction plan uh in front of them for approval, they said, yeah, we want destroy this well, we've approved your well, you'll be seeing it come through the Administrative Committee to put it out to bid in July, and the work likely will be completed in August.
Okay, um when I know Water Master is not gonna have a July meeting, so when Water Master is gonna talk about putting a new one in there? Because they're not gonna have a meeting in July, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong there, go ahead, Director Riley.
No, well, I I I I think the Water Master, they kind of they 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 present ghost ideas, and then they don't give us the details behind it. Uh, for example, there's not a dollar mentioned in this letter request, so they don't even suggest an estimated cost that even consider. Uh, and one of my running um concerns with the Water Master is I I don't think they take their financial uh, there's a structure very, I don't know, I don't know what to say here, I I don't, I don't want to say I have an attitude, uh, but I, but I have a lot, I have a lot of questions, and I don't think I'm getting answers to my satisfaction anyway about how they're managing their future, and um they're kind of, it's it's a, it, they they have, they have their hand out, they they're, they're passing the hat as a way of of managing their future, and I I just have problems with that, so I'm I'm just telling you that, because I'm the representative from the district on that board, and I do have a little bit of perspective that I'm pursuing.
Thank you.
It it is expected to be on the July fourteenth um Technical Advisory Committee uh agenda uh as to what the status is on destruction and the plan for going forward is, so at least at that level, the Water Master will get discussed.
Okay. Any other board questions before we take it out to the public? If not, Joel, let's open it up to the public on this discussion item.
Right, so if you would like to provide uh public input for this matter, uh please raise your hand. And at this time, uh Chair Edwards, I do see that we have Tom Rowley. Let me promote him to panelists, and before you make your public comment, Tom, let me share my timer. Directors, are you able to see the screen here?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Uh, Tom, when you're ready, uh please present your comment.
Hi, good, good evening again, uh Tom Rowley, uh speaking for Monterey Peninsula Taxpayers Association. As you guys just finished reviewing the budget, and and I think George Riley needs to uh recall about the amount of reserves you guys have. Um, granted, the uh, the Water Master doesn't have the user fee and doesn't have the water supply charge and 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 the other assets that you guys have right now uh that are accumulating and building up your reserve, it would seem that it would be prudent to maintain to ma, whatever monitoring we have for the water table to monitor saltwater intrusion, that we would want to keep that and not start over from scratch with a new well. If it's feasible to repair the existing well, it would make sense to do that. So, you know, I I just think it's a penny wise, pound foolish to talk about ramrodding down the Water Master and saying, you know, you guys are being flippant, you didn't put a dollar amount you wanted, but I think it would make sense for the Water Management District to maintain this well if you were the guys that put it in originally before the Water Master was even created by the court, uh Superior Court, so that's just a suggestion, uh it just seems just really weird to try and plead plead, uh you're poor, it just doesn't pass muster, George, so sorry about that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so at this time, I would like to invite Susan S. Uh, to make her public comment to the board, Susan, when you're ready, uh please present your comment.
Thank you, I just uh wanted to ask if uh this well is taken out, would it not be important to keep monitoring for the seawater intrusion? I think um it sounds like it might be important, but it'd be nice if I could get clarity on that. Um, also, I do know that the Water Master seems to cancel meetings a lot, and I'm not sure what they're doing, they have very small staff, they don't seem to be moving forward on some things about getting the help they need to monitor seaside basin, and it's making me really kind of concerned about it. Um, and I'm wondering if you do end up destroying the well, which it sounds like you'll do that cost, but deduct the cost of of uh destroying it from whatever contribution you make, um, at least from the one-third and help, that way they can carry a little of that cost if they can, but um, I I'm just, my worry is that, do we need this to monitor saltwater intrusion? Which according to some reports lately could be a big possibility, especially when I look at what's going on in the Salinas Valley um management plan and its uh lack of apparently including an adequate plan for seawater intrusion, and how far seawater intrusion has actually gone into the valley, so it's a huge concern, so I'm just curious about whether that well might be needed later, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody else with their hands raised, so I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Doyle. All right, General Manager, can you answer any of those questions?
Well, you, I think I just want to make a point uh to Mr. Riley's um question, somewhat ironic. Uh Prop two eighteen, um, you know, on many years after Prop thirteen, uh really was a taxpayer protection proposition, and it also says that what we spend money on has to be uh linked or proportional to the services we provide. And so when, you know, our professionals are saying that facility is no longer needed for the services that we provide, then spending money on that facility is not a direct link under Proposition two eighteen to expending our constituents' money. So I think the case would have to be made that, yes, there is some linkage to services the district provides, therefore enabling us to spend the money under Prop two eighteen, but we can't just act as the bank just because we happen to have money, um, there has to be a a nexus between our services and the investment.
Okay, uh Director Malik, go ahead, sir.
If um if this board decides to destroy the well, and nobody's coming forward paying for a new well, how are we going to do the monitoring? In other words, can we fix the well and make it work rather than destroying it and and end up with nothing?
Good question, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, John, why don't you go ahead?
How about it? The the well has um been asked, the 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 district has been asked to destroy the well by the County Health Department, which has the power to do that, because of the well is compromised, uh it's cracked up by its sanitary seal, and it is leaking higher um concentration, concentration salt water down into the passerobles from the Aroma Sands, uh so it is actively um contaminating the passerobles aquifer, so it is a source that a- and um it was video logged, and there was no obvious crack or any any imperfection that we could find in the well that had an obvious fix. Um, so the conductivity, the chemistry uh information we have tells us that it is leaking water and it is actively uh contaminating, and it's 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 called a cross-contamination. Um, that that's something the Health Department will, re- rather than not telling the Health Department, we came forward, and um it actually compromises the well as a data point, you can't trust any of the data coming out of it, it's actually, it's, it was built to target the passerobles aquifer, now it's it's having chemical influence of the aquifer above it, so um the, it's actually not known now how long this has been going on, so how much of the data set's actually really good still, so um, m- moving forward with replacing of uh a location close to that would be, would be the the right thing to do for the seawater intrusion monitoring networks, and then, you know, like, to to point, again, the the seawater intrusion monitoring networks are being run by the Water Master and Marina Coast.
And I just want to point out that earlier, John dazzled this with the use of the word stratigraphy, um, and then he gave a couple of terms here, so basically, the Aroma Sands are the the sand dune aquifer that sits up on top, and there's some separation, then the passerobles is the kind of the first shallow aquifer, where years and years ago, that's where most of the water supply came from in that area, and then there's a third aquifer down below that, that's our Santa Margarita, and that's where most of the water uh comes from, and that's where ASR does most of its activity, all of its activity. So those are your strata, um, simplified.
Okay, any other questions? On this discussion item? If not, um, I guess we'll be hearing it, it'd be going to watch supply and then get be getting back to us on our decision which way we want to go. Okay, uh this item is closed, what's the next item of discussion, General Manager?
Last item is a discussion on replacement intake wells for the Sand City D-Sal plant. Um, all we're looking for here is some general direction to the General Counsel, um, and let me briefly describe the issue, I think it's pretty clear from the staff note. Um, we have a definition of the Sand City Desalination Facility, which says, and and we also have a requirement that the city of Sand City own it, and Calam operates it under a lease. I don't believe we, as the district, have any problem with Calam becoming the owner of these replacement intake wells, and I don't think it necessarily uh violates or u- undoes our definition. Um, and that's not an unusual position for the investor in utility to be in, which is, you know, owning extraction wells. They own dozens of extraction wells throughout the system. This one then would just feed the plant that they operate under lease. But in discussion of that, and and the city wanted some assurances that we weren't gonna have a problem with the way the the facility was defined, but in discussing it, the ownership issue came into question with um the basic fundamental concept that if you elect to push through with Measure J and are successful, we don't want the ratepayers paying for the same facility twice, in other words, you don't want to have either an acquisition premium or um, you know, some mismatch between its remaining depreciable value and what you actually pay for it, and so uh, General Counsel Laredo or District Counsel Laredo made a a very good suggestion about a buyback agreement, which, as I've mentioned, may not be affordable for the city of Sand City if and when uh Measure J goes to its i- its end. Um, so one of the other options would be uh to buy it back at a set cost with a uh you know, either a an agreement to just say undepreciated book value, or you could have a table that year by year by year uh defines what the the buyback cost would be, and if that's the case, um, then there wouldn't be any double counting, um, there should be no acquisition premium. So I think all we were looking for here is, you know, a nod of enough heads that say, yeah, go ahead and pursue some sort of uh agreement between, and actually be be between Sand City and Calam, I mean, they would need Calam saying, okay, we understand this concern, um, but and District Council's gonna need some guidance and working with the Sand City's city attorney.
Okay, born. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Well, I'm very thankful to uh our General Counsel for coming up with this uh idea, a way of um protecting ratepayers uh from, you know, a way of driving up the cost of acquisition if we get there, and it's a, it's a really good suggestion, and uh I I support trying to use it the way you suggested.
Uh, Director Anderson?
Same thing.
Okay, Director Riley?
Um, I I just want to um comment that I think the city of Sea, of Sand City uh has had a pretty good deal for a long time, and I know the D-Sal is is designed for their future development and their future needs, uh, and in the interim, they make it available for uh the peninsula needs. But I also think that there's, it's a rich little city by comparison to a lot of other jurisdictions around here, so I just don't think we need to be jumping in and trying to rescue anybody's particular problem. On the other hand, I think that we should be, as as Dave likes to say, agnostic, you know, as long as there's no uh uh fallout that may affect some future interest that we have as a district, uh and that can be protected, then uh, then fine, you know, work out whatever you need to work out, but protect us.
Okay, uh, any other? Any other? Okay, uh seen three nods, so you're gonna need a four, so uh leaving up to Mr. Laredo, give us there the best way. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I believe this is all subject to negotiation, what I'm hearing is that the district is uh willing to consider that what the results will be, I, we don't not yet know what Calam will agree to or or what uh Sand City is willing to offer, but uh this is on the table at the moment for discussion, and uh I believe that uh whatever that project is, we will bring it back to you.
Uh, that's correct.
Thank you, any other board, go ahead, uh Mayor Klein.
Yeah, as you were speaking, uh, Sand City has uh several major development projects going forth, and it would make sense to me that Sand City could consider developmental fees going towards the D-Sal plant and the wells, so if they don't have the money right now, they soon will, especially, I do believe they have that that large resort that is, has approval and and would go forth, so that would be a source pass-through money from the developers who develop, uh who eventually would be using the water.
An option.
And that that would cover the concept of a buyback agreement, um, you know, so Sand City would need to look at it from that standpoint, and they could also, you know, also do it as a buyback agreement, and have a separate agreement with us that, you know, when and if And have a separate agreement with us that, you know, when and if, if the time comes and they can't afford it, then we can reconsider it. But we, we just need direction so that Dave can negotiate and say, yeah, if you do this, when you come back to us, because they, they want affirmative action by our board that says we're not going to stick it to them over the, the ownership issue. And, you know, I think that's why it'll come back to you, but um yeah, it's, it sounds like you're in agreement that something that protects our constituents and potential future ratepayers from paying for the same thing twice makes sense.
I agree completely.
Right. Okay, uh, let's take this to the public, see if we have any public comments on.
All right, at this time, the board welcomes your public input for item number thirty-five. Uh, please raise your hand, uh dial or push start nine, uh Director Edwards. I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay, uh, any, we're close this item. Wait for it to get back to us. Anybody want anything, pull from information items with staff reports? If not, I want to adjourn the meeting. It was a long meeting, on, on a long day, but we got it done before the sun went down completely. All right.
Good job.
Me, me and the chair, good job, Joel.
Good night, all.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Well done, everyone. Well done.
Thank you. Good night, good night.
Night, good night.